Ask the council members to take their seat. Now call the public hearing for June 21st, 2011 to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Striplin?
Here.
Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Councilman Renninger?
Here.
Councilman Bowles?
Here.
Councilman Fink?
Here.
We have one item on our agenda for the public hearing. It's a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be in public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975 is amended. Is there anyone in the audience that would have, would want to come together, come before us to speak against this agenda item? Anything? Anyone that would like to speak against it? Does anyone like, would like to come before the council tonight to speak in favor of it? Anyone in favor of it? That's the only item on this public hearing agenda, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Bowles, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light signs? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. If you'll all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag, followed by the invocation tonight given by Councilman Willie Wood Jr.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, grace of God, as long as we know how first Lord, we want to say thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us and every one of us. Come asking you, Lord, forgive us for our sins, but we all have sinned and fallen short. Now, Lord, as we go into these proceedings, we pray you would direct our tongue, guide us in all decisions that we make for the citizens of this city of Prattville. Now, Lord, be with those who are sick, be with those who are grieving at this time, be with our men and women who are fighting in harm's way. Now, Lord, when this meeting is over, we ask that you grant us driving privileges for safety to our destination. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Striplin?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Here.
Councilman Argo?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Councilman Renninger?
Here.
Councilman Bowles?
Here.
Councilman Fink?
Call the city council meeting Tuesday, June 21st, 2011 to order at 6:03 PM. The character trait of the month is joyfulness, finding satisfaction in what is good. Gentlemen, you should have received and reviewed the minutes from the public hearing, the city council meeting of June 7th, the work session of June 13th, and the public hearing of June 20th. Are there any amendments to be offered or comments to be made?
Mr. President, I move they be approved as submitted.
Councilman Argo has moved for approval of the public hearing, city council, work session, and public hearing minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. All those in favor of approving these minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light signs? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time in our agenda, we were entertaining comments from persons present in the audience regarding tonight's agenda items only. Is there anyone that would like to come before the council to address one of our agenda items that are tonight? It's on our current agenda. Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the mayor's report. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I hope everybody's had as busy of a day as I have today. It's been from just about can to can't. But tonight, on our agenda, you know, we've had a lot of several items that have been held over from the previous council meeting and so forth. But the one I really want to talk about tonight is our operating budget. I know whenever we, we've had a lot of changes over the last nine months or so, and whenever I stepped into this role, I talked with each and every one of you guys about looking at different types of budgets and so forth. And we have changed the floor mat of the budget that we were previously using to make it a line item budget. I think it's going to be a vast improvement over what we initially had had. The, what I had presented to you guys also, the last council meeting was changing some more of that floor mat to what they call a governmental accounting type of budget. And for the record, one more time, the, what I presented did not include any new loans. It was just making a, my ultimate goal on that was to have full disclosure of all of our loans, as much of a full disclosure of our financial situation for the, all of the citizens of Prattville. And, and I think that's the direction that this governmental budget is actually leaning to once it eventually, if it was to get passed and implemented. I think that's exactly what it would show, is full disclosure. But I can most certainly understand that change is very difficult. With change, it takes time for, for, for it to soak in from time to time. And I will say that if, if you are uncomfortable with this new type of governmental budgeting, then I would ask that you guys do not support it until we can get together, work out the details, and move forward with it. But I do see in our future, a, some more changes in our budgeting, whether it's this avenue, the governmental accounting avenue, or it might be some other avenues that are out there. That is one thing, when you start talking about budgets, they're not concreted in, but they are a roadmap. But that, the, the main goal and reason for providing, for presenting this governmental accounting type budget was to have full disclosure. But again, if you're not comfortable with it, then just vote it down tonight, and when our budget cycle comes back up again, we'll reentertain it and move forward. But that's really all I have to say tonight.
Any questions for our mayor? Councilman Bowles?
And I'm not sure if this is more for the mayor or for the finance committee, but is the finance committee in favor of going to this type of accounting?
Speaking as the chair of the finance committee, the finance committee has no formal recommendation at this time. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will go ahead and speak on this now. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your comments about if a person is not comfortable with something, and I like that attitude that tells me that you're willing to agree to disagree. And I've often said that for years, and at this point, you know, I, I agree with what you're trying to do, but I don't agree, agree with the timing of it. And I'm uncomfortable with voting on it. I'm on the finance committee. I won't support it tonight because of that reasoning. And I'm glad you made the statement that you made about making yourself comfortable. And I hope by the time the new fiscal start, if this governmental accounting is still a proposal, that I will have a degree of comfort that I can move forward with it. So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the comment there, which one thing, you know, it's been a very difficult, I guess, six months for, for all of us. We've, we've had to make quite a few adult decisions. I think after we were given adult information, we, I truly feel that we have made the, the correct decision and, but there again, if you're not comfortable, then don't support it because there, like I mentioned in several other comments along, I'm not married to this. I've been married once, and I am currently married, and I'm not getting married to anything else. So, if you don't feel comfortable with it, don't support it. We can definitely find something else out there, just like budgets. By comparing automobiles, we got plenty of Fords and Chevys and Toyotas out there. So, if this is not what the council wants, we can look forward to something that's bigger and better.
Any other questions or comments, Councilman Striplin?
Yes. As I mentioned at the, the work session the other night, I feel like there are sort of three components in this proposed budget change, some of which I support and some I don't. And if, if you would choose to consider resubmitting portions of this, then it, it might, parts of it might be more favorable.
Well, I appreciate that, and we'll, as, as we move toward our 2012 budget, you'll be seeing different elements of this, and, and it might be, we might have a hybrid come out of it.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess I'll pick up on Councilman Striplin's comments and say that there are multiple parts to this. The proposal to include loan proceeds and offset those in terms of loan payments or debt service, so that it's essentially budget neutral. I can see how that could be couched under transparency and, and actually would tend to want to support that piece. The other element, as I understand it though, is that some of the additional revenues beyond what was in the original budget were going to be incorporated in this revision, so that that became a revision and those dollars would be spent. And my strong sense at this point in time is that any additional revenues beyond those that we put in the budget at the outset should go to a reserve and not automatically be assigned to, to essentially be spent. So, that was the main piece of it that I'm having a little bit of concern about and would challenge you to, to think about how it might, you know, better serve the city at this point in time to, to look at it going into a reserve.
Well, thank you again for the comment. Transparency is a word I'm trying to get away from. Full disclosure is going to be my two new words. But I, I am longing for a reserve account. I mean, it's, you know, you and I have had numerous discussions before, sitting on razor's edge and so forth along that line. But definitely, that is the goal for the next, next budget cycle, is to work toward building up a proper reserve. Thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
One more question for you, Mayor. If we do pass this tonight, it's basically giving somebody in the future a map to look back at what we did. Is that correct?
Well, I think so. You know, and one of the main reasons that I sort of like this idea, and, and I hope we will start looking at our budget a lot closer, me personally, I would like for us to review our budget every six months. Because for one good example, it would be our fuel line items. We can go in there and we can estimate what we think that we're going to be needing to spend off of, off of the three year, pre, prior years. But as much as fuel has fluctuated, and also, for example, you probably know how much, well, you won't be a good example because you travel all over the, all over the place, but Mr. Albert Striplin, he knows how far it is from his house to his place of business. So, he basically knows how much fuel he's going to be utilizing there. So, he can sort of basically budget for that. In a business aspect, as you would better understand, you're traveling all over the place. One day, you might burn two gallons, or you might also burn two, two tanks of fuel. So, I think that is one reason why we do need to be able to go back and look at that and try to determine exactly why did we use additional fuels? Was it because of additional service performed? Was it because of vehicles that were not performing like they should? I mean, it, it can be utilized as a tool, and that's the way I was looking at it, is that this is more of a tool. And, and if, if we give them an allocated dollar amount, and we do have to come back and readjust that, and they have to stand there before us and explain why we're having to adjust this, to me, that makes them more accountable. My opinion, it, it made us all more accountable.
Well, what I was getting to the point at, when I was first elected to this position, and the first budget came up, I took the last three budgets and compared them to the budget we were looking at.
Yes, sir.
And the budget process that we have really is not a clear picture of what we have. And hypothetically speaking now, if the public comes up and fires everybody sitting up here and says, "We're done with y'all," and we have a whole new crop of people in here, I would like them to have a clear picture of what we've done, so they can take the last three budgets, put it together, and make the next budget. And I think it would just be prudent to try our best to have a good, clear picture for the next group of men that are, or women that are sitting up here, for them to go forward with the city, to protect our city.
I agree, which, you know, like I mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of change in this arena over the last several months and so forth. And one thing I do want to speak highly of is, is finance. Doug Mosley and HR, Lisa Thrash, they have put a lot of time and effort, have given up quite a bit to help us move forward with this. We have found a lot of areas that in the previous budgets, going back numerous years, that things were not addressed. Holiday pay, some areas of overtime and so forth. So, there's, there's been a lot of new questions brought up, and we've been able to find some new answers. And so, I guess the best way I can put is that we are evolving, and I think we're evolving toward the better.
Any other comments, questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now come to the report on the status of the city finances. Mayor, do you want our finance director to do this, or would you like to step up to the plate again?
I think currently now I'm an invited guest, and so I would invite Doug Mosley to step up, please.
Mr. Mosley?
Provided all you guys, gentlemen, with a income statement. Shows all the revenue on the first page. For, this is for the month of May. You'll see we're tracking pretty well. We're about 66.67% through the year. So, that kind of gives you a comparison to look at percent of budget to see where we are for the year. You'll see business license is already over budget, so we've received more money than was, than was initially budgeted. Most everything's tracking pretty well. The one standout you'll see is, at the bottom of the page, you'll see other, you'll see 38% there. You might think, "Well, wow, that's really falling behind." Well, actually, what that is, is the OptiCom grant that we got for the traffic signal preemption program. That revenue is, was budgeted for that account. We have not gotten that money yet. It came in in June. So, that was one reason that that looks a little off. But everything else is tracking really well. You'll see for the month of May, just the sales taxes alone were up 4.32% from the previous year. But if you factor all the revenue sources together, we were up 3.94% month over month, and 7.2% for the year to date. So, not too bad in, in the economy that we're, that we're currently in. Any questions on the revenue side?
Councilman Striplin?
Mr. Mosley, I have one question. It's probably been asked and answered before, but as you mentioned, we're 66.67% of the year complete, and our sales tax is 54%. Is that because that you've taken money out of that for the adjustments that, economic incentives that are due, or?
No, sir. What that is, the reason it's at 40, 54% is because the additional 1% doesn't, didn't kick into the last half of the year. So, we'll start catching up on that at the end of the year. Does that make sense? We had a lower rate at the beginning, but the sales, the rebates are not taken out of the sales tax.
Okay, so any sheets that might have had a negative in the first column there that I might have received in January and February or March would not be accurate then?
Negative in what column?
The month sales tax.
In sales tax? It should not have been negative, no? No, sir.
Even in October?
In October, it would be, because of the fact that all of October's sales taxes in the audit are pulled back to the previous fiscal year because they're collected in arrears. So, what we collected in October was for September. So, it gets, that adjusting journal entry is made to pull that into the previous fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
Two more questions. First, does May, does these, these figures wouldn't show our tax increase, right?
Correct. It does not.
So, we're 4% up without tax increase?
Correct.
Second question, have we been, any of this extra money, have we been able to put any money back into the insurance fund yet?
We're continuing, we're continually funding the insurance fund. Every week, we put money over.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley? Thank you, Mr. Mosley.
Well, do you want to go over the expense stuff, too? It's the second half. I was just going, I was just trying to do that before we went.
If you're ready. Yeah, go right ahead.
All right. The second half is the expenses by department. This is also for the month of May. Couple of standouts you'll see on the high side. You'll see the operations and the executive department. That is over budget due to the way we budgeted the car allowance for the mayor. We budgeted on the current administration's allocation that they wanted to take, which was $100 a month. However, the primary administration had already taken several months of that allocation at a higher rate. So, that's the reason it's over budget. Also, a good bit of liability insurance is in their operations. So, that's one reason they're over. Finance department, the operations was up, was over also. That's due primarily to the audit being over budget. An update on that, while I'm on that subject, we've actually, we ended up getting nine responses back on our request for qualifications on the audit. The mayor, Lisa Thrash, and myself have sat down and narrowed that down to four. We've sent out requests for them to provide us a pri, an estimated price on the audit, and we're going to try to set up meetings with the finance committee so a representative from each firm can sit down, and we'll have an opportunity to ask each of those, each of them questions, just to get to know the, the firms a little bit better, so we can make a better decision on where, what we do going forward. You'll see the city clerk, benefits is over budget as well as operations. Benefits is due to insurance as well as the operations account. There's a lot of random insurance policies that end up going into city clerks because there's just not another place to logically put them. You'll see HR is actually over budget in their benefits a little bit. There's a couple of things that are affecting that right now. We're working on, working that out. Part of that is the retiree insurance. We're working on, it's more of an accounting glitch that we're trying to fix. And also, the unemployment insurance is up, is over what was budgeted due to layoffs and such as that. Judicial, you'll see, is over budget. That is primarily due to the operations portion of the jail rent that was not budgeted. It was also not budgeted last year. I discovered that when we started going over and in detail a lot of these things. It's, a lot of these things that have come to light during this process, which I think is actually a good thing. So, we will be better prepared when the next budget comes around. You'll see IT is at 85% on operations. That's not over budget, but it's, it is over what the trend, you know, because we're 66% through the year. A lot of that is due to the, a couple of things that were under budgeted in the previous budget. Long distance is a big one. Was not budgeted properly. We, I sat down with Brad, Mr. Building, and discussed some of the things in his budget and how things were getting categorized in the different expense line items, and they were kind of going all over the place. And we got that a lot more uniformed, so we should have a better trend to know what that's going to be for the coming year. Everything else is pretty in line with where it should be at this point of the year. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mosley? Any questions at all? Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Okay, we'll get into our committee reports. Councilman Striplin?
No report.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. The wastewater and sanitation committee met this week on resolution number three. It is the recommendation of the committee that we do go forward with this this evening. We have met with a, an engineering firm to discuss long-range goals and plans, including the possibility of purchasing some equipment. We also are going to be scheduling in the next week another engineering firm to talk about the, the experiences that they've had in another city. But it is the recommendation of the committee we go forward with resolution number three this evening. Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation on number two?
Well, yes, sir, but I'm going to have to ask my able-bodied fellow city council member and committee member, Mr. Striplin, to actually explain it, because I, I understand how a DECA works, and I understand how we're trying to go forward with paying for an expensive upgrade to our aeration basin. But I'm not clear, because I've not had an opportunity to talk to the mayor, about how we're going to be able to fund that, even though a DECA has indicated that they may go ahead and allow us to apply for the money. But I'm going to ask Mr. Striplin if he would not mind.
Why don't we get into that when we have the agenda up?
That'd be fine.
Not the agenda up, but the item on the agenda.
That'll be fine.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, if, if our committee met at 5:00 this evening, and I apologize that we compromised the other, I think, planned photo of the new council.
I'm adaptable. We're going to do it at the end of the agenda.
So, I figured you'd made alternate arrangements, but we did have a full hour of conversation. The primary thing was to look at some of the proposed changes to the ambulance service out in the county and staff. Mr. Whaley in particular and chief have worked really hard and put a lot of time into that, and I think they've fashioned a, a sort of a different approach that they're going to be getting with Mr. McDowell to sort of fine tune some of those pieces, boilerplate things and otherwise in the contract. And then I hope to share that with the whole council prior to looking at the steps to interface with the county in terms of what the revised proposal might be. So, I, we had some time, too, to, to talk about some of the staffing issues as well, and we'll be getting back to the council on those in the future.
Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Council President Pro Tim Fink?
Just to let the members of the leisure services committee know, we're going to meet at 6:30 in the morning at Jim's, just to confirm that with you guys.
Finance committee did meet last night, and we discussed the revised, the revisions in the budget, and we were of mixed opinions. That's why we had no formal recommendation tonight. But that's a good thing, because you don't want everybody agreeing on everything all the time. It's not what you pay us for. We also went over the parameters of the expense as it relates to resolution number two. two and resolution number three, and we'll discuss that when we get into those items. The city is getting better financially each and every day, we just need a lot of days to get where we need to be. That being said, we'll get into our agenda. First agenda item is a resolution to declare weeded lots to be a public nuisance and order their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. This is the subject of a public hearing at 6:00 tonight. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds, number one, is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, mosquitoes, and other vermin. Number two, may cause the further spread of weeds. Number three, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property. And four, may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville declared in Resolution Book 2011, page 92, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at various addresses in the City of Prattville constituted a public nuisance and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances. And whereas notice as required by 11-67-62 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended was provided in the Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book 2011, page 92, adopted on May 17, 2011, and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville held the required public hearing at 6:00 PM on June 21, 2011, permitting the owners of same properties listed in Resolution Book 2011, page 92, to present evidence, objections, and protest regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 2579 Cops Ford Road, 1679 East Main Street, 411 Hallmark Drive, 2002 Highway 14 East, 209 Juniper Court, 311 Marlette Drive, 610 Pinecrest Street, 103 Stakely Drive, 804 Stonewall Drive, 311 Summer Hill Road, the vacant lot next to 430 East Sixth Street, the vacant lot next to Regions Bank Highway 14 East, and a vacant lot on White Oak Court. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right, shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Approval of the resolution has been moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on this resolution before us? Seeing none? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by a like sign, I see none, this resolution is passed. Resolution number two is to award bid 011-001 to Cornerstone Civil Contractors LLC for the aeration basin improvements at Ataga Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount This was held from our June 7 meeting. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Striplin?
Yes, sir. In response to Councilman Argo's question that during the night of the work session that this topic was brought up and it was, the method of payment was discussed, but it was also determined that it would be prudent for us to confirm that with a DECA. And I think Mr. Mosley was going to check on that, so if we need to wait, then we, we need to wait until we get that confirmation that the, that the process is as we were led to believe it would be.
Mayor has his hand up. Do you want to address that, Mayor?
Yes, sir, we have everything ready to go. All we need you guys is to approve it, and we have everything covered.
Any further discussion on this particular resolution? Seeing none? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none? Resolution passes 7-0. Item three is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for services with Goodwin Mills in Kwood for wastewater study with a cost not to exceed $3,000. This also was held from our June 7 meeting. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Councilman Boes?
This would go for, can, I've got a question. It can't, what we're asking to do is to have a local firm come in, an outside firm come in and tell us what to do to fix their problems, is that correct? Can, if we don't spend the $3,000, can you tell us what to do to fix any problems? So is this wisely, would this be a wise expenditure?
You need to come to the mic so we can get this on record.
Let me re-ask the question so it's on mic. Can you personally, or people that work for City of Prattville, tell us what we need to do without having the outside engineering firm, because we have an engineer at Works Force, to spend $3,000 to tell us what to do?
We can give you a good idea of what needs to be replaced, how soon it needs to be replaced. As far as lines in the ground need replacing, an engineering firm can give you a better estimate of the sizing on that. They have all the calculations based on population density such as that, you know, make those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of resolution number three signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none? Resolution passes 7-0. Resolution number four, to adjust the fiscal year 2011 general operating fund budget. This was held from our June 7 meeting. Is there any further discussion on resolution number four? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by a like sign? Fails four to three. Three, four? Four against, actually, three, four. Ordinance number five, or item number five, is an ordinance to amend Chapters 26 Building, Construction, and Related Activities and 105 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Prattville Code of Ordinances. Dr. Miller, will you please introduce this ordinance?
Yeah, and this one's multiple pages, so I guess I'd just read the title, David. To adjust the fiscal year, I'm sorry, but that's the short one. To amend Chapters 26 Building, Construction, and Related Activities and 105 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Prattville Code of Ordinances. Mr. President, I so move.
This ordinance has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. By point of order, this will hold to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none? This will, by point of order, carry over to our next meeting. Item number six is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds, number one, is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin. Number two, may cause the further spread of weeds. Three, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property. And four, may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determine the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. 339 Bedford Terrace, 301 Marlette Drive, the vacant lot west of 439 West Fourth Street, 625 Wisteria Road, 224 Woodvale Road. Now therefore be it resolved that, number one, the City Council of the City of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses to be a public nuisance. Two, the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Ataga County, or Elmore, Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. And number three, the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on July 19, 2011, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, Councilman Fink. Councilman Fink has moved for adoption of this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution, setting a public hearing? Seeing none? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none? Resolution passes 7-0. Next resolution is to authorize the mayor to sign a stormwater detention agreement for Pendlebrook Subdivision. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville acknowledges that a detention pond exists on property owned by East Memorial Baptist Church on Old Ridge Road, and whereas in consideration of the City of Prattville allowing the pond to be constructed according to the plans submitted at that location, the City of Prattville required a stormwater detention agreement be entered into by the parties. And whereas the purpose of the agreement is to ensure the proper construction and maintenance of the stormwater detention pond, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the City of Prattville authorizes the mayor to sign and enter into a stormwater detention agreement for the detention pond that exists on the property owned by East Memorial Baptist Church located on Old Ridge Road. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution is moved, been moved by Councilman Argo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none? All in favor signify by raising your right hand, I'll get it out. Any opposed by a like sign? Seeing no opposition? This passes 7-0. Item number eight is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Alabama Power Company to provide electrical service at 122 Ridgewood Road. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the City of Prattville has the authority to grant easements over municipal property and rights of waste, and whereas Alabama Power Company proposes to locate power lines and other facilities on the City of Prattville's property located at 122 Ridgewood Road, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that it is in the public interest to convey said easement, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville conveys an easement to Alabama Power Company for location of its power lines and facilities on City property along Ridgewood Road 2. The mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute an easement to Alabama Power Company, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney, David McDowell. Mr. Chair, I so move.
This resolution has been moved by Councilman Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Wood, you have your light on, did you want to?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by a like sign? Seeing none? This resolution passes 7-0. Resolution nine, or item number nine, is a resolution to establish the 2011 redistricting guidelines and milestones. Mr. Argo, since you chair this committee, would you please introduce this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd be glad to. Whereas Section 11-40-8 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended requires that city councils divide their jurisdictions into districts having an equal number of residents, and whereas the City of Prattville experienced a significant population increase over the past decade, and whereas an analysis of the city council districts designated by Ordinance 2003-031 and amended by Ordinance 2008-010 using data from the 2010 decennial census indicates that Prattville's population is unequally distributed among the seven council districts. And whereas the council has initiated a process to adjust the district boundaries and equalize the population in the seven districts, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the following guidelines are established for the 2011 redistricting process. Number one, all districts shall have equal representation. Districts will be drawn so that council districts provide one-person, one-vote representation. The deviation of plus or minus 5% from the ideal district population maintains an acceptable level of representation. Number two, the plan shall comply with the Voting Rights Act of 1965. According to the Voting Rights Act, districts shall be drawn in such a way that assures all voters have an equal opportunity to participate in the political process and to elect representatives of their choice. Number three, existing district boundaries should be maintained. Where possible, existing district boundaries shall be maintained. Traditional lines should not be redrawn if their existing locations can be reasonably accommodated and equal representation achieved. Number four, as much as possible, council districts should be compact and contiguous a geographic unit. Number five, the 2010 U.S. Census of Population shall be the source of data for determining population and representation. Number six, to the maximum extent possible, district boundaries should include whole neighborhoods. Number seven, existing voting centers should be maintained for voter convenience and efficient election administration. Number eight, district boundaries should be easily identifiable physical features such as roadways, streams, power lines, et cetera. Number nine, all citizens and interested groups shall be given the opportunity to use the official data and to present alternative district plans. All submitted plans will be evaluated and considered by the city council. Be it further resolved that the city council shall, number one, endeavor to present a draft plan by August 16, 2011, and complete the redistricting process by October 4, 2011. Number two, seek input on all proposed redistricting plans through the use of the city website and public hearings. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution has been moved by Councilman Argo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion or questions on this particular item? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, we had a public hearing last evening at 6:00 in these chambers where Mr. Duke, our city planner, had an opportunity to go over the process that we put into a resolution this evening. Members of the general public had an opportunity to address the council and to give us ideas that they had as we begin this process. We made it very clear last night that no map has been drawn, no changes have been made to city council lines as a proposal as of this evening. So we, we want to go forward from this point with the idea that we're going to use this resolution as the basis. Councilman Striplin, Councilman Wood, and myself will meet with Mr. Duke to begin that process. Once we have a plan ready for council consideration, we will bring it, but before it is adopted, we will have another public input meeting where any- we will have another public input meeting where any member of the general public will have an opportunity to react to that particular plan or bring a plan of their own for us to consider. So as we go through this process, it's going to be, Mr. Mayor, what was the term that you used? Full disclosure. There'll be full disclosure on any proposal that the council will consider, and it will be placed on the city website. And it's our hope as a committee and as a council, I think, that we have this plan in place with as much time as possible for the general public to become used to the new lines, whatever they may be, and hopefully that will be about a year out from the next municipal election. So I think that by getting started early, and I want to thank Mr. Duke for nudging us to do that so that he can get to work and the committee will have an opportunity, and we look forward to bringing you a proposal in the coming months. Thank you.
Look forward to that. Any other comments or questions pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution passes seven-oh. Number Ten is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Buffalo Rock for a soft drink machine at the urban management facility. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has developed a new urban management department with multiple employees on staff, and whereas currently there are no vending machines at their location, one twenty-two Ridgewood Road, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that it is in the employees' interest to provide a vending machine for their use at this location, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement with Buffalo Rock for one vending machine at no cost to the city. So move, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Striplin. Councilman Striplin has moved for approval of this resolution. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? I see none, passes seven-oh. Councilman Wood, do you have a resolution to bring from the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As a matter of fact, it's an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Members have a copy? Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an ordinance to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the first full weekend of August twenty-eleven, as authorized by Act Twenty Zero Six, dash, five-seven-four, generally referred to as the state sales tax holiday legislation. Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. Section One, in conformity with the provisions, Sales Tax Holiday Rule Eight Ten, dash, six, dash, three, dash, sixty-five, and Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, eleven, dash, fifty-one, dash, two-ten, enacted by the Alabama Legislature during the two thousand and six regular session, providing for a state sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at twelve oh-one A.M. on the first Friday in August twenty-eleven, August five, twenty-eleven, and ending at twelve midnight the following Sunday, August seventh, twenty-eleven. Section Two, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by Sales Tax Holiday Rule Eight Ten, dash, six, dash, three, dash, sixty-five, and Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, eleven, dash, fifty-one, dash, two-ten, except that the time period shall only be as specified in Section One above and not for all years thereafter. Section Three, city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and to forward said certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. Section Four, this ordinance shall become effective on July first, twenty-eleven, and upon its passage and publication as required by law. Mr. Chair, I so move.
This ordinance has been moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. By point of order, this must carry over to our next meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the roofs.
So move.
Motion to suspend the roofs is made by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the roofs? All those in favor of suspending the roofs signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, we're unanimous, and the roofs are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion on this proposed ordinance? Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we all know, everybody's having some tough times right now, and this is just another balancing act that we need to do. We did meet on this in our finance committee meeting. We've increased fees, we've increased taxes, and I think it's appropriate, as well as the other members of the committee, that we need to give something back to the citizens, at least for a weekend. I truly believe that anything that we give back during this weekend is going to come back to us probably the following weekend or the following month. So with that being said, Mr. Chair, I urge that the council pass this for our citizens for this weekend sales tax holiday.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, it passes seven-oh. At this time, we will open the floor up for any comments from the citizens on any subject that you'd like to bring before the council tonight. Is there anyone here that would like to bring a concern, or question, or a comment before the council? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
I'm Carl Vires. I live at one thirty-nine Till Street. I want to say thank you all for whoever it was that had anything to do with pavement or road on Fairview. It's messy, but it's looking better. I also want to know is on our sewage field, it went up ten dollars. No problem. What I want to know is all these people live in these apartments where they only have one bill. Do they only get raised ten dollars, or does each family get raised ten dollars? Does anybody know?
It's a very good question. I'm glad you asked that question. Mayor, you want to address that?
Yes, sir, thank you. We realize that there are some adjustments that need to be done with that, and that's one reason why I have asked the council in the near future to give me the authorization to have a cost analysis done, and so we, there are some issues we need to address, and once we have this cost analysis done, we'll be able to address them.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the council on any issue? Any concern? Any compliment? That'd be nice. Okay. Mayor, do you have any comments in closing?
Yes, sir. I start off with, I want to thank all the department heads that have really helped me out through this week so far and last week. They've done an excellent job. They've stepped up the plate in so many ways, and not also, I need to mention, the city employees. The weather that they've been having to put up with, the heat and so forth, they have really truly amazed me the last several weeks of how hard they've worked and the amount, the production that they've been able to do. They have truly been able to do a lot more with less, and I just want to thank them for that. I also want to remind everybody that the closing days of Steel Magnolias are just right around the corner, so if you're going to go see it, you better go see it. We're thirteen days away from the Fourth of July parade. Need to be there, if not, you're going to be missing something. And I guess last, but not least, happy anniversary to our council president. I can't figure out why she puts up with you, but she does. Thank you.
Councilman Striplin?
Yes, very briefly, I too express appreciation to all the city employees for everything they do. Storm situations that occur and damages removed and the community doesn't really know that those things have happened, but thank you for your efforts there. One item I would like for, and this may be a legal point to consider, but with all these public nuisance situations that we have, I think sometimes we only think of the cost to the city being the gas and the labor, or the diesel fuel and the labor, but really when those lots are cleared, we've got equipment depreciation and potential repair, we've got cost of recording the lien, attorney fees, and I would like to see an administrative fee to cover the council's time as well as the department head's times that are taken up, sitting out here in a meeting when we have to read these lengthy pieces of documentation. And so I think that's something that we should consider in the future. Thank you.
Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Miller?
And that caught my attention, is that administrative fee just for our having to go and investigate a complaint, or?
Whatever a thousand dollars per lot will cover.
I'm not sure that answered my question, but I think the sentiment is there, because I've had, you know, a lot of chronic, and there's one that's not on the list that I'm sure is going to be on the list shortly, or else the neighbors have just given up. So that perennial kind of repetitive thing has been a theme that I've raised a number of times, and, you know, if you get on the list more than once, that ought to be a situation that warrants some sort of additional, I guess, fee. And we've been told before that we're bound by state laws and things of that nature, and I think that I just, it's a very frustrating situation. So if your idea can have some merit and it's something that we can pursue, I would fully support that. I did want to ask the, and maybe this is for either Ms. Thrash or Mr. Mosley, but, you know, there've been a lot of things that the legislature has done that, in particular, I'm questioning if they're going to also have a ripple effect into our city workforce. And one that comes to mind is the increase in the share for retirement that's going to go from five percent to seven and a half percent, that additional two and a half. Is that sort of, is that sort of something that's at the council's discretion, or is it built into what RSA does, or how does that exactly apply to our workforce?
Once the governor signs House Bill Four-Forteen, which is the increase in payroll deduction for retirement, our employees, the council, at the council's discretion, you can go under that legislative act. If you choose to do that, our employees' payroll deductions would increase from five to seven point two-five for non-certified public safety, and from six to eight point two-five for certified public safety, October one of two thousand and eleven, and another point two-five, October one of two thousand and twelve.
Okay, and to your knowledge, is that the only one of the bills that might have an impact on?
As far as I know, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
Well, on the lighter side, we will not see you guys again before July fourth, because it falls on a Monday, so I wish everybody a happy July fourth. Congratulations to the Fire Work Committee for, as far as no putting on the fireworks, free of charge to the city, so it's not costing us anything, so please come out and enjoy it, because a lot of people have put a lot of hard work. I was not one of them. The mayor has most of the credit and other council members on that, and besides that, y'all just have a great weekend.
Councilman Fink? I have just a few things. First of all, thanks to all those who contributed to our Fourth of July effort. We exceeded our goal, and the excess will be held in escrow and used next year for the Fourth of July event. Thank you, Kelly, for leading the charge there. You did an excellent job. Like to commend those that are working outside, that are citizens, not our citizens, that are employees of the city, serving our citizens. You're doing a yeoman's job. Keep up the good work. Like especially commend Stephanie Southern, our city clerk, our interim city clerk. I have really worked her hard since I've taken over as the president of the city council, and thank you, Stephanie. You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Our next meeting is July the fifth, two thousand and eleven, six P.M. in this council chambers. I invite the city council members and the mayor to join me as soon as we adjourn in the mayor's office for a photograph. We need to update our website. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.